Guys.
All right, the time there, Madam Clerk? Just about, we'll give it a minute. All right, very good. Call this meeting to order, please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with the very name of Justice Trump.
Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Here, here, here.
Leo.
Here.
Louis.
Here.
Shannon.
Here.
Trustee.
All right, first up, we have consent agenda. You have your regular city council meeting minutes from May the 9th and accounts payable in the amount of ninety-two thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and sixteen cents. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We approve the consent agenda.
All right.
Second.
All right, motion by Trustor and a second by Leo. Discussion questions. All right, this is roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please call and roll.
Beckett.
Yes.
Lee.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Louis.
Yes.
Shannon.
Yes.
Trustor.
Yes.
Next up, we have staff reports, you have the reports in your packet. Any questions for any of the managers, city manager, anybody else, we even have Scott with us today, Mr. Moxie with us today. Yes.
I just want for the manager, Ryan, any word from Verizon on how they're doing with the installation of the cell?
I have not received word, but we do have Cindy Osmond.
Okay.
Cindy, do you have any updates?
The trees have
Uh oh.
been cut down and trimmed and we're waiting for the new pole to go in and shortly after that, I think.
She got muted, okay. I heard trees are down.
Trees have been trimmed, poles are up, I do know that.
Poles are up, okay.
Oh, yep.
All right.
And they've actually installed some of the electrical service on the pole up by the softball field, so, which is one of the certain locations, right?
Up by the high school.
Yeah, you're right.
Yeah, yeah, they've already started to put the electrical service in and. Okay, look at things are in motion now, that's great.
Great, Cindy, you muted, if, I don't know if you muted yourself on purpose because you didn't want to talk about it or, but things are in progress, I know that they wanted to have everything up and running by quarter one before, quarter one meaning like by June 1st before the summer commence, so.
Great, wonderful, good.
And then just a, Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, just a couple of highlights, on my report, page eight, salmon in the classroom, kids fishing tournament, so you and I were lucky enough to be invited to that wonderful program, and in fact, we have some pictures that we wanted to show, not in your packet, but so that's Leo and Dakota, it was like a pet.
Seriously, that's the first thing he did as grandma, that's Leo.
Yeah, yeah, so we taught Dakota how to hold the fish for Leo, he was doing great and then there's a couple more photos that we could share at some later date, but yeah, it was, it was a good time. Way to connect with the kids and then everyone, if you want to explain a little bit about the program, that'd be a good time.
Yeah, and some of you might know more about than I do, but basically the sixth graders, they start off the year with basically, you know, for lack of a better word, a fingerling, and not even that, it's much smaller than an egg, and basically raise, they have their own salmon that they raise throughout the year, and then as we had the DNR place, what, a hundred and five thousand fingerlings over here in the Calmazur River, so they can basically lay their trace, so to speak, pick up their trace so that when they come back, they know where to come, so the kids, the way they call on like the sixth grade experiences to go out on this fishing trip, what's fun is so many of them have never been out on a boat, much less on the Great Lake, and have never been fishing, and, and then afterwards with lunch, they each receive a rod and a reel, and this is all compliments of our Sagatuck Fishing Club, and they, they have their annual event in August, so we'll probably have that special event come in front of us again, they have quite a few sponsors, raise a lot of money primarily for the kids, it's just a great classroom experience and coming out of the classrooms and educators, just a great way to learn, it's very hands-on.
Yeah, so I just wanted to highlight that item, thank you.
Thank you, it was fun. Other, anything else for any of the other managers with us? All right, if not, we'll move on, we have no agenda changes, so with this, we'll jump right into it, guest speakers, first up, Phyllis Eif, Inner Urban Executive Director, how are you?
I am wonderful, thank you for letting me come and present my little spiel about what the Inner Urban is doing now and how we started, but we're, on May 8th, nineteen eighty, we started our very first trip going across the Sagatuck Douglas Bridge, which was pretty neat, Corbless Taylor was our first rider, and we just unearthed the very first driver log that has her ride written on it, so I've got a lot of history at the Inner Urban, so we are starting our forty-third year of serving the community, I expect we're going to hit our two-millionth rider probably next year sometime, so that's exciting also. Phil Quoddy was how we got the very start for the Inner Urban, there was a State of Michigan grant, I think it was offered in nineteen seventy-seven, and it took quite a while to apply for it and then get it and then get the vehicles to get us started, but the State of Michigan provided a hundred percent of the funding for the first two years of operations with a one-thousand-dollar local payment, so each of the three communities paid three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and we got a bus service, so it's pretty amazing, and so we're now funded through federal and state Department of Transportation dollars, and we have a local, local millage, we've got point-five mills coming up on the ballot in August 2nd of this year, and that will go on the ballot as a renewal increase because it's moving it from the point-four-six-oh-eight that it's, that Headley has rolled it back for and go to point-five mills, and with being formed as an Act fifty-one public transit agency, we have to do that for five years, so it's a five-year millage request. When we very first went on the ballot to get local millages, it was a point-seven-five mills, and we did that for two elections and then went to one mill for two elections, and then since nineteen ninety-eight, we've been at the point-five mills, and that helps us to keep the fares for the passenger down at fifty cents for kids and seniors and a dollar for adults, and we offset, you know, what it costs us to provide that service with the local funds that come through with the millage dollars. We're a wonderful asset to the community, we cover all of Sagatuck Douglas and Sagatuck Township with eight vehicles and a staff of twenty, the pandemic lowered our passenger counts by about half from seventy thousand rides in twenty nineteen to thirty-five thousand the first year, and we've climbed back up to about ninety percent of pre-pandemic levels, so we're getting passengers again, which is absolutely wonderful. In the last four years with grant funding, we've been able to replace six of our eight vehicles, so it's the newest fleet that I've ever seen my whole time in the fifteen years that I've been with the Inner Urban, four of the new replacements were just the full-size cutaway buses, and those seat about sixteen passengers, and then two of them were the smaller Ford Transit vans that are actually powered with propane, so it's a bi-fuel, it can be gasoline or propane, and so we, and then we also have grant funds to see about transforming or retrofitting two of our larger buses to be propane also, and we've got the propane right now at a dollar sixty-nine a gallon, who knows what that will do the next time we have a contract change, but yeah, definitely a difference in what we're looking at for gasoline or for, for Scott Diesel.
Yeah.
And, and then that burns very much cleaner than gasoline does, and you can go quite a bit longer between oil changes since it burns so clean, so our mechanic is, is just yay, and then in twenty nineteen, we upgraded our thirty-nine-year-old pencil and paper dispatch system to a computerized system where the dispatcher can type in the ride into the computer and then it goes to a tablet for, that's on the bus, and the driver can then see that ride information, it's great because it can keep information specific to a passenger or specific to a rider, so like a credit balance, or if they have a no-show that they owe for, or if you're supposed to pick up at the back door or the front door or don't go down the driveway, that kind of information, I, it's worked out very, very well for us, although paper and pencil never goes down, so technology is sometimes whatever, yeah, but we've got a chance for getting some upgrades that will allow us to send notifications to passengers when the bus is near, or let them get on their phone and book a trip through an app, so we're excited about that, and I thank you for this opportunity to share what the Inner Urban does, if you've got any questions, I'm happy to answer them, or if you'd like a tour of our facility at all or want to stop by and see us, we're over in Douglas on one hundred Wiley, so thank you.
Wait, don't go anywhere now, don't be rushing off, go on ahead.
Yeah, Phyllis, what can you tell us about any of the free weekends that might be happening with the shuttles that typically happen, I know sometimes those get sponsored for the busier weekends where they're doing the shuttles from the high school.
Great question, Lauren.
Thanks, Phyllis.
Yeah, we applied for a grant through CVB and they offered us a grant to provide the Saturday, Sunday free parking shuttle between the high school and the downtown Sagatuck area, and so that will run eleven to five, and that's free, and then we also have signage at the high school that says if you need a ride, you know, other times, to just give us a call, and then they can park at the high school during other hours and have our demand response, anytime we're open, be able to come pick them up, we also offer Fourth of July free service, I think, and the City of Sagatuck has sponsored that for many years, and so we'll find out if that's happening this, this year, and Fourth of July is on a Monday this year, we'll have the big event on Saturday for the art fair and the free parking shuttle, and then Sunday will just be busy because that's Fourth of July Eve, and then on Monday, we'll have free fireworks shuttle, so that will go till at least midnight, and then Cow Hill Yacht Club sponsors free fireworks shuttle and shuttle for the beer tent for Venetian, and then we also, as our gift back to the community, do free rides on Halloween Parade Day and on New Year's Eve.
All right.
So when does, when does the free shuttle start as far as that CVB grant?
The first Sunday in, first Saturday in July.
Okay, got it, perfect, you probably said that and I didn't hear.
I did not.
Okay, okay.
It's generally the weekend before Fourth of July, so it can be the end of June or the very beginning of July.
Are you all on social media?
Yes.
That's what I thought, so all that will be posted on the Facebook page and.
Yep, we have Facebook and we have a website.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you so much, great to see you. All right, next up, Kelly Roach, Tri-Community Recreation Advisory Board.
Hi, everybody, so I'm Kelly Roach, and I'm your appointed advisory board member for Sagatuck Community Rec, so this is long overdue because I was appointed just before COVID started, so I haven't been back, I want to thank Jamie for putting me on the schedule and thank all of you for letting me talk tonight, so I've got three goals, one is to make sure all of you are familiar with Sagatuck Community Rec, and I would bet from some of the faces in this room that if you're raising kids or you have raised kids that you've, it's touched you in some way, and then just give you an update and then share some of the challenges that we have and what our hopes for the future are for the organization, so the mission, and I'm hoping that maybe you all have this, Jamie sent this out to the group, I think, Friday, so the mission for Sagatuck Public Schools Community Rec is to create and manage a wide range of high-quality wellness and recreation programs, camps, lessons, classes, leagues, and events promote citizen involvement and a strong sense of community, so the history on this is it's been around since nineteen ninety-six, originally was under the direction of the township, and then all the surrounding communities paid annually, so this was one of, I think, one of the first ones where the tri-community came together, so I think it's a really good working example of the communities coming together, in two thousand and five, a millage was passed, so point-two-five mills, that put it under the direction of Sagatuck Public Schools, so that's where it is today, and then the millage has been renewed every year and it'll be up again for vote the fall of this year, so, few fun facts is it serves over twenty-five-hundred-plus community members, and remember, because we're school of choice, we have some kids that are coming from other communities, but that's a huge number of people considering how small our community is, provides over sixty leagues, events, and clubs, eight-plus sports, and then there's also a lot for adults, so don't forget, there's hiking clubs, senior or adult basketball, social tennis, pickleball, ski club, and then it's also our beloved Bridgewater, so don't forget about that one, and then the one thing that we're super proud of is that it's sixty full scholarships every year, so no kid has ever turned away because of that, so everyone in our community can play, no matter what, there's also free equipment exchange, which is awesome, I had a kid that I coached this fall, he kept showing up for soccer in tennis shoes and I had no idea what the situation was, we, I asked what size he was, I went to the office, got him a brand-new pair of cleats that had been turned in, and the smile on his face said it all, so it was awesome, so it's a really cool thing for our community, and then just how it's run, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand annually, they're runs it through the millage, and then about forty thousand through, is generated through registration fees and sponsorships, so that's how it all works, and then as far as benefits, I mean, this is how our kids in our community are learning how to be team members and teammates, this is a great way for all of our parents to be able to get together and meet one another, give back to our community, and then one of the big things is that, you know, it's been found, Community Rec has been found to reduce feelings of depression and anxiety, so especially for the kids coming out of this time with COVID, it's, it's very important, and then overarching as far as the community is reducing crime rates, lowering healthcare costs, increasing property value, and encourages tourism, so it's a lot of positives for our community, so the good news in terms of what's going on with the program, so it's growing, we've added programs, additional teams and leagues, and then the other thing that's really significant is that we're starting to compete in, in much more competitive leagues, so we're not just in this area, we're starting to, to reach into the Grand Rapids area, so there's just a lot more competition through that, which is awesome, considering we have a small group to pull from, so these kids are really committed, these athletes are very committed, so as of right now, Community Rec is allowed to use school fields and gyms, but the high school athletes always get first dibs on that, so that's where we run into some challenges, because that's always, it's always going to work that way, so right now, high school teams practice two to three hours every day, they take up field time and gym time from about three-thirty to eight, so that's the window that we're working on where all of these teams, these sixty leagues have to fit in, so that's where we get into some of the challenges that we've got, so, we've got the Sagatuck High School Stadium, as you all know, this is our only full-size field for football, soccer, and track, and so one of the examples of what we have to do in terms of make sure that we've covered all the Community Rec programs is that we often have teams practicing on non-regulation-sized fields, we've got to cut down the time that these kids can practice because there's only so much time, and that sometimes puts our athletes at a disadvantage where they're sort of in these makeshift scenarios, so for instance, like our varsity middle school or varsity soccer team and middle school team, they're playing over at Schultz Park, that field is meant for third and fourth graders, so that just gives you an idea of it's, it's just not maybe the right fit all the time, the flag football team, they're playing on a quarter of the size of the field that they would for regular games, and that's the, really, unless something changes at the high school, that's the only thing that they do before that they go on the regulation-sized field to play, and then Schultz Park, while it works for us, it was never intended to be, in terms of the way that it was built, to be the regulation soccer field, so it's, it was intended to be an open space, and so the soil and turf are not the highest quality, and that is where, essentially, if we're not at the high school field, that's where everything is taking place, so that's sort of, you know, just a baseline, I just want to give you guys an idea of sort of what the challenges are in terms of making sure that all of these kids have opportunities to be on the different fields, and then it goes into what goes on at Schultz Park, the gyms are, the, the ball fields are the same situation, you know, I was asking, why can't we use Jummers Field more often, things like that, and all those fields are different size based on what the league is, right, so our little T-ball guys can't play on a larger-sized field, things of that nature, and then gyms are the same way, we've got three gyms in the community, we've got two at the high school and one at Douglas Elementary, and again, first dibs to the high school students, so we do a lot on the weekends, a lot of the times are pressed down, and so there's just a lot of juggling to make sure that these things can happen, so that's sort of what we've got going on with everything that's positive, so, in conclusion, since this was created in ninety-six, we've been able to make do with what we have, our cooperative agreements with Sagatuck Public Schools, City of Sagatuck, Douglas, Lake Town, and Sagatuck Township are really unique and special, and we've really benefited from that, and they've allowed us to do a lot more with less, the renovations to Schultz Park and the high school fields have been super beneficial, and we've, we've used them as much as we can, however, as we continue to grow and move into the future, we're hoping to look at expanding our field and gym space to sustain the growth and really the achievements of our local athletes, and provide even more community activities, so at our last advisory board meeting, we kicked around adding a lot of other things that we'd love to have, and right now, we're just really tight on space to be able to do it, and really, the goal is to provide safe and accessible fields and improve our community that allow for future success and growth, so one of the things and the reasons why I'm here is we would love to respectfully ask for an open conversation about the airport field, the space out there, and see if there's just opportunities for Community Rec to be a part of a conversation, and see if there might be something there that we can do in the future, so really, at this point, you know, it'd be Scott Kajic, who's the director of the program, and then maybe some of us that are on the advisory board, just take a walk there and sort of look around and, and see what the needs are on our side and what the possibilities are with that, with what Sagatuck City has, so with that, I thank you, and any questions?
Questions?
I guess I would ask, are there any fundraising efforts underway to try to, you know, expand those fields, more baseball fields, the soccer fields that are regulation, and even gym space with a community center or anything like that?
Yeah.
Any thoughts on that?
There haven't been so far, and really, I think it was more that we need physical space, so, you know, I mean, I think Scott's done a good job of really trying to take care of the fields that we have and improve them, and there's actually things that I didn't get to go over that are in the report of improvements that have made, been made to existing fields, so we're really trying to make those and use those as well as we can, so I think if we knew that there was going to be more space, then do we look at grants, do we look at fundraising, do we look at other opportunities to, to make that work, but in, it's in terms of adding on to what we have, I mean, we have the littles for the soccer, we've marked out chalk spaces on the back of a baseball field, we have the flag football guys on the back of the baseball field at Berryfield, so, I mean, those, those field spaces have been used and maximized in terms of what we have access to right now.
Yeah. What other sports would you add, what, what other sports would you like to add?
So right now, we don't have a swim team, so we're looking at, I had talked to Holland Aquatic Center about some type of collaboration there, and also Hamilton has a swim team, so we talked about doing something that would promote that, so right now, what's really cool is we actually provide for second and third grade, two weeks of fully-paid swim lessons through the PTO, that's what we raise funds for, and that's super unique to our community and also amazing because we live on this lake, so we need these kids to be safe every summer, and so we've started that there, but then it's sort of the ability to offer that ends, and so we're trying to build that up, just like we did with soccer a few years ago, I mean, we didn't have a really strong soccer program, and now in the next few years, you're going to see Sagatuck High School, especially in the, well, actually boys and girls, they're going to start to crush it, I mean, there's some really, yeah, kids that, it all started with Sagatuck Rec, and parents have really put in the time, and these kids are just into it, and, I mean, they're, they're super athletes, and then they've gone into the club teams, and then they'll come back, so there's a lot of exciting stuff going on, so we'd love to be able to offer more of that, we'd love to have yoga, we'd love to have meditations for the kids, especially coming out COVID, ways to cope, we talked about adding a footsaw league, which that would be in a gym, and that's soccer skills in the winter, so there, you know, there's different things working around, the issue with footsaws, like, what's the time that we can do it, because the gym is pretty maxed out, and again, it, you know, it's only during certain times, right, it's November to April, but that's, you know, I mean, we don't have other spaces to be in because of our long winters here.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah. Real quick, I'm curious, have you all talked to the Fenville folks about how they funded their community center over there? Have you been there?
I, it's beautiful, so I don't know the, I don't know the background on that, that's something, I can get an answer.
It was a voted millage.
Okay. It's a, it's a lot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so I don't have the background on that, but I know Scott probably would, so I can get an answer for you all.
Yeah.
Just to hear, yeah, that would be incredible, let's think really big, right?
I'm looking at you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Good. All right.
All right, thank you.
Great, thanks, Kelly. All right, we are at that portion of the agenda where we will accept public comment on any agenda item only, if we have anybody here who would like to join us, come up to the podium, introduce. Yeah, your letter, your, don't you have a letter in the packet?
Yeah, it is.
Come on up.
Yeah.
How's that for, how's that for making it work?
I'm here because I, here's a picture of my mom from probably nineteen forty.
Oh.
On top of Mount Paul.
Introduce yourself first.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Renee Zeta, ninety-eight Pike Park Street.
Thank you.
And I'm just concerned because the whole, I know they did the stairs about ten years ago, which, it was wonderful, but the whole top platform is very concerning because, as you saw, I walked up there and I was on the platform and there was a lot of areas that were damaged or needed repair, and I know the history, I'm on the board at the History Center, and we, I, there's been talk of the whole downstairs area, so I saw Scott one day and I grabbed him, I'm like, can you, can you blow off the top of the pavilion? They did a great job at trying to what they can, but it's just in disrepair, and I wanted to know what is the plan, which I hope it's not a long way away, so I hope there is something planned in the future, so.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned, that's.
I mean, really, for public comment, we can take your comment, but I really can't, so thank you.
Well, it is a concern, and my other idea is for funding, what if you put a lockbox at the bottom of the steps and people who would want to donate, put their money in there, and when they climb the fence and stuff, to help provide the upgrades to the pavilion, to the stairs, to the maintenance, anyway, that was an idea I have.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, others here, anybody online, Madam Clerk? All right. Okay, we have no introduction ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business, so we'll move on to Resolution twenty-two zero five-two-three, Bridge Street Project. Bit of work.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we have Cindy Osmond here, we have John Moxie, Scott Herbert, and myself to address this, we have a sample motion for you.
Okay.
Which is in the packet, page fifteen.
All right.
We've talked about this for quite a while, and so I would suggest that we turn this over to John Moxie.
Mr. Moxie.
Yes, thank you, thanks for having me tonight, we have been talking about Bridge Street for a long time, it's been on in my personal radar for quite a while because the road, to say it's in disrepair is, is an insult to roads that are in disrepair, it's in really bad shape, until fairly recently, it didn't have a lot of value in pursuing it from the city standpoint because there were no city residents on the street, that has been changing recently, we have one house that's nearing construction, and we have another house that is approaching construction, so it's certainly climbed onto our radar further in last fall when the one property owner that, that was building said, hey, I need, I need water, what do I do, so scrambling last fall, we, we started conversations with not just that property owner, but everyone in that area to try and figure out what's the best way to try and serve this area, not just with water, we looked at sanitary sewer options, and we went through several iterations of that last fall into early this year, we finally settled on kind of a traditional, let's extend water main to serve this, this new house, we got that designed, we got a permit application in, and then that is when the second property owner approached us and, and said, I, I'm going to be building as well, so we structured the project into a base bid, which basically gets the water main and the roadwork required to restore everything afterwards to that first house, and then the alternate that we had in there during bidding, we added an alternate to just extend the project all the way to the city limits, basically to set it up for future, the township has contacted me and said, you know, we, we just want to make sure that we're talking to each other, they may extend it into Huron, Huron Bay at some point, loop it to Maple Street, and so we're, we're trying to prepare for the future is what the total project is, and basically, the, the project involves crossing Blue Star Highway, the existing water main is on the north side of Blue Star Highway, so that's, that's a challenge all in itself, just the traffic control, and then running down a very narrow corridor in Bridge Street, and once we're done resurfacing everything to, to bring it up to a, a more manageable situation for the DPW. Again, we looked at sanitary sewer, it's, it's not. Again, we looked at sanitary sewer. It's, it's not part of this project, but we did try to plan things out such that that can be added. At a later date without having to redo a lot of the infrastructure there. We tried to keep the water main as tight as we could to one side so that we have room to put sanitary sewer in some form or fashion on the other side. Part of this project involves getting some easements, not uncommon in a, in a area like this. The, when the, our, our forefathers built the road, they kind of followed the path of least resistance, not the platted 33 feet. We basically have half a right of way there. So part of this project Cindy's been working on coordinating with a few of those property owners to try and get easements. Try and bring everything into conformance so that when we're done, it's a, everything's up to par with where we would want it to be. Moving forward, we recently had the bid opening. We received one bid. Normally when I'm standing in front of you saying we, we got one bid, it's, it's a way over our estimate. We're, we're within 10% of our estimate, which these days seems like a good place to be. So we, we basically wrote up a recommendation of awards, saying this is, this is what the market is today. If, if this project is, is the priority, this is what the cost is. We feel this is a reasonable price to do this project. You could certainly, the, the main concerns we heard, we had three other contractors that were holding plans that we were expecting to see bids from that didn't submit a bid. Most of it was they are just so busy that they, even for this fall, we have it scheduled for this fall. They were not sure that they could get the materials, get their schedule opened up for us. So one option in front of you would be to either rebid the project for next spring's construction. Given where construction pricing is going, I don't know that that's going to be a cost saver. We'll certainly, I would think, get more bids if we do that, but I don't know that you can count on getting better pricing. Because nobody knows where the price of a barrel of oil is going to be 12 months from today. So that's what you have in front of you. There is a resolution basically to award the contract to L's Excavating out of Hamilton, Michigan. They just recently completed the sanitary sewer project on Bridge Street or Butler Street. We were very happy with the work they did. They, they now understand kind of the, some of the things that go into working in a community. Like Sagatuck, there's different challenges than there are in other communities. So they're, they're aware of that. They did great work. We, we enjoyed working with them on that project that ended successfully, I think by and large. So I have no reservations there about recommending that they do the work. They're, they're very qualified for this. The only real caveat to any of this is, is the lead time on, on those water main materials. What they've told us is that they have enough materials just in their yard to finish the Blue Star Highway, get that done, get that paved. Make sure that that is done and ready to go because nobody wants that to be open any longer than it needs to be. So that's not a concern. The main concern would be whether they can get the rest of Bridge Street paved before the asphalt plants close. And, and fallback plan is very much like what we planned on Campbell was to leave it at asphalt millings. It'll take a little bit of extra maintenance over the winter and then plan on it being first on the schedule in the spring next year. And again, that's a fallback plan. If, if things go well, I, I think it still could get paved this year, but it really depends on how quick they can get the rest of those materials they need. That's what I've got for you. Any questions, concerns?
So we've got two motions. The second is to waive the requirement for connection to municipal water. So with two motions.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. One of the homes under construction, they're ready to go, I think, for the summer. So we could, the city could waive that requirement, allow them to put in a well. With the caveat that they will have to pay the special assessment, which the city will decide on at some future date. When the water lines go in. And there's another home that's also looking at doing the same.
Okay.
Yeah, just based on the timeframes involved to get this project, which is quick. I mean, in city terms, again, we're talking about last fall to, to today. In city terms, it's quick, but when you're sitting there without water at your completed house, it's different.
Okay. Let's, let's get this going and we'll enter, I'll entertain a motion for the first one, if so, if possible.
Make a motion, Mayor, to award the bid to install the water main and resurface Bridge Street between Blue Star Highway to the city limits to Al's Excavating, Inc. In the amount of $429,254 with a 5% to 10% for construction contingencies.
Second.
Second.
All right. Motion by Leo and a second by Stanton. Questions for John.
I question if we really want to do this. I question the costs. I question it. To me, it's a tremendous investment for two residential properties. So I'm not going to support it. I could support the second option and put it indefinite period of time that these people could connect to their own private well and private septic. Until maybe the township comes along at a later date, sharing the, you know, road repair or the road reconstruction costs. There's probably going to be a time when some of these costs come down, when materials are more plentiful. Maybe, maybe not. There may be time when there's more funding available. If we ever, this big pot of gold that we keep told, you know, keep being told is out there, it's going to start filtering down for, for infrastructure projects. This, I think dedicating this money at this time, and I don't even know where, from a budgeting standpoint, where it fits in. It certainly was never on, I don't think, a high priority list, I think. And we haven't even had a chance to balance that against the other work that John's doing with all our other potential projects. So I, I, I think it'd be somewhat irresponsible to vote in this much money without looking at the entire picture. And just getting a real handle on what kind of funds we have. Keep in mind that there's probably six or eight, at least six homes, very high priced homes. Just around the corner in the township and they've been on well and septic for, ever since they were built, 20 years or so, they haven't had any, any issues. I think it would be prudent just to let these people build, let them pay for their, their wells. I'm sure we can make some type of waiver. And just see how this all works out. I mean, it's a hell of a lot of money and takes away from a lot of other projects. So that's my spiel.
So my question would be for Cindy, is it in the charter that we have to provide this?
Water to them?
Mm-hmm.
Cindy, can you hear us? She's there.
It's not an ordinance.
It's in your memo, the ordinance requirement to connect to city water. I'm having broadband problems. So if you can't hear me, that's the reason why.
We can hear you.
So basically it's in the ordinance that we have to.
But it's not in an ordinance that we have to put in the water lines. So, so the inference is that those are in existing water lines. And we don't have to run water lines wherever our city limits are. That's my understanding. In fact, I think there's still some homes up on Maple Street that have wells, to be honest with you.
I'm hoping to clarify that.
Yeah, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
I mean, so we have this in, in the cover page here, 5202. Each and every house shall have a single water service. This is, has, has been our position with the, the current builder. The two homes under construction, this has been part of the communication thus far. Cindy has made that clear from, from the onset when they reached out to us. And so if there's a different interpretation on that, I don't know where it comes from. I don't see any language that says only if the water lines exist. And then, you know, the, the back, on the backside of that is, there's probably a lot of property to be developed. So if you're going to set a precedent to allow homeowners to install wells, that should be well established and, and thought through.
Okay.
Where we are at the special assessment, I would think usually when you make these decisions, you also have information on what are the potential special assessment to offset? What type of investment there is in city funds?
Yeah. So there's a big box in that back corner over there. It's on a chair somewhere. So I went through, I went through that big box to see historically what the assessments have been for water extensions for new home builds in the city of Sagatuck. I would assume following this precedent and this ordinance. And it looks like, it's like a 50/50 split wherein the city would pay half of the cost and the homeowners would pay the other, other half. In reaching out with legal counsel to discuss the same as far as kind of what the precedent or. What the rule of thumb is around the state for special assessments and water extensions on new builds. Usually the homeowners or commercial properties pay the full freight of water extensions. So I think the city historically has been pretty generous in allowing 50/50 split according to legal.
Go ahead.
Are, are there homeowners, the people who are building these homes are aware that, you know, their share of the assessment might be $100,000?
Yeah, we've had conversations with the, the lot owners on, on Bridge Street. And so we've provided them the rough estimates or engineering estimates. So they are aware. We told them we do the research and we, we're doing that. And of course they want the hard numbers, but we were not able to provide them the hard numbers until we got the.
Today.
Until today. So yeah, they're well aware that they're being asked to, to pay something into this, which is again, very, very standard.
That, you know, that, that puts, you know, a little different twist on things. That, none of that was in any of the information that we got.
I think we've talked about this several times.
But we haven't talked about the dollars amount. To, to the degree that we're going to be assessing the local property owners. I also think, again, you can check with legal is that the special assessment, we just cannot put it on.
No, no, there's a process. There's.
There's a process and it has to be approved by 50% of the affected property owner.
Well, go ahead.
And so we, I'm all for going down this path and looking at the special assessment and everything, but if we. Approve the funding or the materials, they said, screw you guys, we're not going to pay for a special assessment. What are you going to do?
Well, there's a public, public hearing process. Typically they don't have a choice as, as wrong as that may seem. And.
Why would you check that though?
I've been, we've been discussing this with legal along the way. John probably knows the process as, as well. And so this is not new news to, to any of the homeowners on Bridge Street. We've had discussions with them. Again, they're looking for hard numbers and now we finally have them. So this is kind of where we're at the moment. This is all too sudden. You know, we can delay this to a future meeting and then have a further conversation and bring legal staff in. I mean, what we're looking at would be a, what, usually we have what, 30, 30 days to close on the bid.
Our bid hold is, I think, 45 days.
45 days. So if you need additional information. We're happy to delay this and bring it back at a future date. The only concern with that is supplies.
Every day we wait. Yep.
Mr. Gardner.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I am in agreement with Councilmember Beck. And I was, when I got the pack and was reading through, I'm in support of the project, but it's the wrong time. And I think it's the inappropriate expenditure for, given all the projects that we have from a city standpoint for infrastructure. Benefiting two properties for $400,000 is kind of a tough pill for me to personally swallow. And I agree that there needs to be some further research done in terms of what the actual financial commitment is going to be from the property owners for this project. Just too many, too many unanswered questions that limited benefit for the town. For the amount of money. And I'm in, I'm in support of waiving the motion to have them hook up to the municipal system and have them do their own well and septic for a period of time. But I think we need to be much more financially smart about this to get to where we need to be to make this happen for the property owners.
Go ahead.
So it wouldn't just benefit the, the two lots. So I think there is, there are six lots in, in total.
Potentially up to six, depending on how splits go and things like that.
Yeah. So at a minimum six, I think there, there might be more lot divisions on there. So I, I think to say benefiting two lots would be inaccurate.
Plus, plus the township and the looping and there are, there are a little intangible benefits that, you know, kind of fall outside of your table here.
So this whole process, Madam Mayor, if I may, this whole process is, staff has been following the policies that have been set forth by the city. That's the track that we've been going on for the last eight, 10 months. We've been reporting on this. Again, I know the numbers are very sudden. The special assessant, assessment methodology has not been discussed with council. We could certainly have that discussion. So that's kind of where I'm at with this.
Anybody else have questions? We've had this, we've been discussing this for months. So.
Well, we've been discussing the theory.
I was not finished. I was not finished. Please, I did not interrupt you. If you would please. Thank you. This has been, we've been discussing this for many months in workshops and in meetings, but primarily in workshops. There's been quite a bit of discussion. This shouldn't be a surprise to anybody. I think we can trust that the staff is doing their job. We recognize that the assessment will be made. Any of us who purchase property or build know that these assessments come in these cases. And this communication is in place with the folks who've been down there and are building. So it is no surprise to them. So I'm, I'm reluctant personally to hold this project up, knowing full well that there's going to be a 50/50 split on this with folks who own property down there. So it's not the city that's on the hill, if you will, for this in total. So that's where I'm at.
Okay.
Go ahead, Ken, first. Go ahead.
Well, where is the 50/50 split stated? I mean, is, is that something that council passed or is that just a past practice?
Madam Mayor, if I may, yeah, just based on my, my research and Mike probably has some information on this as well. Because the Campbell Road area, I think they went through this process. It was a 50/50 split with the, the installation. So it just seems like it's based on my research, a past practice of the city.
It's past practice, but it's not a, a policy of the city.
No, it is not. No, sir.
It was a case by case basis. My recollection was, it was a set. The blowback was so intense for it to pass on all the costs of what you mentioned earlier. And I also think that benefiting property only pays an assessment based on the front footage of their, you know, so they don't pay. They don't pay 50% of the entire cost. So they wouldn't benefit. It's only once the pipe is in front of their property. I believe is that that portion is what's special assessed.
That's, that's often how it works. We have a unique situation where one of these two properties is at the end of the, the right of way. So the, the frontage, there are, there are ways, basically, I'm kind of getting into the legal aspects of it, which isn't my forte. But there are ways to look at what is a fair distribution of cost. And it's not just frontage. Sometimes it's acreage. Sometimes it's a combination. There are multiple ways of doing.
And I'm all for investigating that, but I'd like to have hard numbers on what exactly the, how these specials, special assessment works. What is the potential assessment to each benefiting property owner? How are we going to structure the payback of that special assessment? You pay it all upfront or do you finance it over 10 years again and put it on a tax bill? Again, an added cost to the city. Well, I've been through a couple of these and so I don't think I'm a genius or anything, but I just.
I had Holly up next.
Okay, please.
I was, I was just gonna, just for the audience and the people listening. The ordinance states each and every house shall have a single water service connection. All single and multiple family structures, businesses and industry located in the corporate limits of the city shall be connected to the municipal water system. In accordance with Kalamazoo Lakesuit and Water Authority regulations. So I too, when I saw that number was taken aback. But from the beginning, it's been my understanding that as a city, this is what we are obligated according to our own ordinance to provide.
And then we should see that from an opinion from the attorney. Because I, you know, I think you can take an exception to that. Or you can temporarily waive it, or you can change the ordinance. For certain zones or certain, certain streets or something like that.
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, I think, I think everyone's, you know, wrestling, wrestling with the number, which is, which is large. I think we all agree that the number is large. But it sounds like, no, it's not just two homes. It's potentially, is it six or eight homes? Six, other six more buildable lots or four more buildable?
Depending on, Cindy might know the exact number based on the minimum frontage to split something, but it's, it's at least four. It's, I think it's more like six or eight.
Okay. So it's, it's an area of the city that, you know, could be developed. It's, it sounds like we don't really have a great handle yet on sort of, you know, you know, what the hit is to the city versus the people that develop these properties. I apologize, I'm at a bit of a disadvantage. I wasn't at the workshop on Wednesday. So this number is new to me as well. I don't suppose tonight we can sort of try to hash out what, what this really looks like in terms of. The cost to the city in the long term.
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Ryan.
Based on the discussion tonight, I would recommend that we have our attorneys show up and talk about special assessment methodology. And since we have 45 days to lock in this, this bid, which is seems like a pretty solid bid at this point, given construction costs. bring this back.
Okay.
Dial it in and then take action. That's just my recommendation.
So with that, we'll need a motion to table this motion until we get that set up. If I can have a motion to table.
So moved.
All right. Second, please.
Second.
Second, okay. Motion by Gardner, second by Traster to table this motion until we get it set up. Do we need to entertain the second motion now? Probably not.
I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Well, hold on. That's not true.
Almost more important.
That's, I'm sorry. Don't let these guys hook up.
I would make a motion to temporarily waive the requirement of connection to municipal water due to the unavailability of water main materials for 1045 Bridge Street and 1065 Bridge Street via private wells is approved by the Allen County Health Department until the new main is available.
All right.
Second.
All right. Motion by Gardner, second by Stanton. Any questions?
Did we vote on the table?
Oh, we need to, that's right. We need a roll call on the table. Thanks for that reminder. Okay, backing up. Roll call on the tabling of the motion initially.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Very good. Thank you, Ken. All right. So we have Gardner motion and second by Stanton on the temporary waiving of the requirement. Now roll call. Any discussion? Good. Okay, roll call.
Second?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Gardner?
Yes.
Leo?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, can I make one suggestion or request? And maybe those of us who have questions that we might write a specifically, you know, review with the attorney in advance, you think that would be helpful if some of us had, you know?
Yeah, my sense was you were going to have, go ahead. My sense was you're going to have the attorneys come in and talk about this.
But I meant to be prepared for some, some questions, you know, is what I'm getting at.
Sure.
All right. So it's, it's open and.
So there's, there's just to wrap this, put a little bow on this. So, so there's two pieces we really want to look at. We want to look at the ordinance, make sure we're clear on the ordinance. And we also would like a better handle on the numbers and what the assessment looks like. What the hit is to the city over time.
Yep.
And what the possible prize is in terms of the development of that street.
Yeah. I'd also love to have added to that what the, how these properties add to our tax base.
In addition to that, what's the precedent if you do allow them not to hook up? And then also this comes into ARPA funds as well. If we were to delay with, are there possible funds out there? So it's a complex puzzle. And, and just to say that the driver on this has been the residents and your policy. They're very eager to build and we've been trying to respond to them as quickly as possible. As John had mentioned, we're working at a municipal rapid pace. So we're doing our best.
Well, if, if we can fit it into the next workshop, I think, I think everybody's primed for the conversation.
Yes, perfect.
Doable? All right. Very good. Next up, as discussed at the workshop on Wednesday, the doc purchase request.
Madam Mayor, the motion is there.
All right. I'll entertain a motion, please.
Okay, Mayor, I would like to make a motion. I'm very motiony tonight, so I'd like to make a motion to deny the offer until such time that the council has had time to review long-term plans for Mount Bald Head parking area.
Very good.
Support.
Motion by Leo and a second by Becken. Any questions? We discussed this quite a bit the other day. So anybody?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I did miss the workshop as well. But the, the, what, the people who are leasing the property right now, their lease expires this year. It's not the, where does this leave them if we kick the can down the road?
Renew their lease.
They would approach the city to renew their lease. The end of the year.
Yeah. So instead of a
So yeah, the motion really is just to say that the city's not going to sell the property to them.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with the lease.
They made that offer.
So what they want a longer term lease.
Well, that would come back.
That would, they have an approach.
What you're saying is when we approved the leases that started January 1, this was, this was bundled with the rest of them. So
It would come back in the bundle of leases.
If they wanted to re-change the terms of that lease, you would have to pretty much start over in that. Yeah.
Yeah.
The idea is we're not selling the property at this point because we might have some plans there with the city.
All right. This is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right. On special events, Sacagawea Center for the Arts jump into summer. Again, this was, I'm trying to remember the young lady's name. Was it Hannah or Heather? Started with an H. I can't remember. She was Megan. Not even an H.
There's an H in there.
Oh, thank you. Okay. She's spent a good bit of time and took us through this. This is an event that occurred last year and went rather well. So basically, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, motion to approve the jump into summer event to take place on June 18, 2022, organized by the Sacagawea Center for the Arts.
Second, Leo.
By Stanton, second by Leo. Any questions or concerns? Not, this is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, good. Next up, we have the special event for the National Trails Day. Mr. Manager?
No, Madam Mayor, this is on page 41.
Yeah, and this was, we chatted about this the other day on Wednesday at the workshop quite extensively. I think this is the second annual for this as well. Went rather well. That I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the National Trails Day event to take place on June 4, 2022, organized by the Radar Hill Hyke Club.
Second.
All right. Motion by Gardner, second by Dean. Any questions?
Super cool event. Love it.
Right. This is a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, very good. Next up, we have the banner at the Palat sign for the garden club. Anything to add, Mr. Manager?
No, Madam Mayor, thank you. Page 50.
Again, discussed on Wednesday at the workshop. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the request to install a banner to promote the Sacagawea Douglas Garden Club plant sale within the public right of way from July 15, 2022 through July 23, 2022. Second.
All right. Motion by Leo and second by Stanton. Questions? All right. This is also a voice vote. All in favor, please say yes.
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 Oppose? Moving on, we have a Fourth of July financial contribution.
It's on the agenda. Yeah, so this is budgeted. Yeah, really, you don't really have to take any action on this. It's a $3,000 contribution.
Okay. And this was a regular event that we did with, for the Rotary for Fireworks.
That's, well, we, it's for the Fourth of July event. Can actually contribute to fireworks per se, but for the Fourth of July event.
All right. So it's just a FYI.
Correct.
All right. Very good. All right. Next up, we have a pavement management plan. Manager.
Madam Mayor, we got John stepping back up to the mic. Hot holes and road conditions, my favorite subject this time of year.
We're not done with John and asphalt costs yet, are we?
Ugly road tour. That was, that's, that was a good one.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, you know, this is the time of year that a lot of our seasonal residents come back. And then obviously, this is Michigan, so we have potholes all over the place and lots of discussions about road conditions. I'm sure John's going to talk about this. It's a very tricky time with municipalities as far as how much road work you're going to do, especially with our water service replacements. And so it's kind of a combination of waiting for ARPA funds, American Rescue, American Rescues Plan, and then lead service replacements, and then doing roadway work, trying to avoid having to go back and do roadway work four years down, down the road, no pun intended. And so with that, so I hope I didn't steal any of your thunder.
No, that's, that's great, great introduction. Yeah, and I think it was, Mr. Becken mentioned it at a meeting that really kind of got me thinking about that, yeah, literally, probably every road in town is going to get touched in some way or another by the lead and copper rules because just the age of the system and, and because of so many unknowns. So what, what we started with was, and it's, it's a little bit counterintuitive, even early in my career, I kind of, it didn't make sense to me. But encouraging you to spend money on your roads that are in good condition. It's, it's money that goes a lot further. You're doing crack sealing, you're doing surface treatments, things like that, to try and keep those good roads good, to give you some breathing room to try and address the roads that, you know, like Bridge Street, that are just completely falling apart. So that's, that's kind of the strategy. We went through basically a combination of things like mill and fill, like what we did on a few of the intersections in Butler Street. That's going to look nice for a year or two. It's going to start cracking quickly because we all know the stuff underneath is, is not great. But at least trying to, to fix some of those worst areas while at the same time, spend some money on your good roads and try and keep them good for as long as possible, keep them from getting potholes and things like that. This is, the draft should probably be bigger and bolder. It is just a first take. Scott and I drove around. We've done that a number of times over the last few years. But just kind of updating the things that we're seeing, the things that he's dealing with. For those of you that have been on council for a while, about four or five years ago, maybe three or four years ago, we did a, a full-blown Pazer study. Pazer is a, an engineering, formalized way of taking a road and assigning it a number, a numerical value to help us prioritize, at least on the engineering side of things. In the next few years, it would be a good idea to update that because obviously things change from year to year. But that was the basis, plus Scott's input. And then the other one that went into this is looking at water and sewer needs. We went through Cal Lake's capital improvement plans on both of those, as well as the work that we did on the storm sewer system, looking at some of those higher priority areas in the storm sewer system. So that all kind of boils into this as a starting point for, for your input. Because it's not just engineering that goes into these decisions. It's, it's everything else that matters to a community. So this is the net result of kind of the engineering side of things to kind of start your discussion. Again, we, we tried to prioritize some of those higher priority maintenance needs as opposed to Butler Street needs new water, needs to, well, doesn't need new sewer, but it has some sewer needs. That's going to be a big project. What we tried to do is, is prioritize those things that we can try and keep some of those good roads good and try and address some of the higher priority needs that don't necessarily have immediate needs underneath. And that's what you've got in front of you. Again, think of it more as a menu than a, you need to do this, this, this. It's always going to be called a plan. A plan is just that. Plans change all the time. This is a budgeting tool, a planning tool for you as, as the decision makers.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, so we're not asking for any action tonight. This is just kind of a first review of how we go through the process to analyze the roadways and how we prioritize things.
Okay. Do we, we don't, do we have a copy of this?
Yeah.
It's, yeah, it's really tough to read. Well, you can't really read it.
You can see.
Yes.
John, thanks for being here this evening. By the way, thank you very much for the work you're doing with Maple and Mason. I heard from the property owner and she's very pleased with the work that's being done. So thank you. The Pazer, what does Pazer stand for?
I knew somebody was going to ask me. Pavement assessment. I can't get you much farther than that. It, it was a system that was, I think it was the University of Wisconsin that developed the system. So it's, it's pretty much industry-wide used, everything from 10, the, the day the last roller finishes paving a road to, to zero when there's nothing left. So yeah, it's
I think we're on our second.
And, and it's, and Madam Mayor, if I may. So it's not like a, a super scientific, like they're not rolling something over the pavement to, to make this analysis? It's like based on a series of pictures and?
Yeah, yeah. The, the, the manual tells us, you know, if we see cracking like this, it's a five. If we see big potholes like this, it's a three. So yeah, it's, it's half science and half kind of judgment call for our folks that are out in field doing the study.
And that was shared with council previously because I remember seeing it was color-coded with different, right?
Sure, yeah.
So where is that easily? Is that, is that on a website? Is that something we can look at at?
Bring it back. Oh, she looked it up. Look at that, Phyllis.
We got that.
Pavement, surface evaluation and rating. I should have.
I'm not sure if that's on the, on the website and or not.
Yeah, I think it's for folks. It's, it's something for everybody to look at because
I thought we added updated too. And I'm not so sure if it's part of the Pazer, but we also dovetailed in the, the water and sewer and storm.
We had, we had parks kind of, we, yeah. So we had kind of a full picture together too.
So you get a full general idea on the road condition, not only what's on top, but also what's underneath.
Some, sometimes the map is a little misleading too because when our folks walk down the road, if, if they see an area that's a four, that segment of road becomes a four. So you see wide swaths of red when, you know, just because we've been doing some of these projects, we know that whole road isn't red. We just know that there's a spot or two or four that are, that are in that condition. So it does get lost a little bit, but yeah, certainly that's available. We can, we can get it to you. We can have it for your, for your packet.
Scott? Yeah, thank you, Mayor. To pick up on, on Mark's point, do we have a sense of where we are with our lead and copper rule inventory? Do we have a good inventory on, on what services have been replaced with copper? What services are unknown? What services we suspect are lead throughout the city?
Yeah, that's an ongoing process. So several years ago, the mandate from Eagle came out to do a preliminary distribution system materials inventory. So basically that was without starting to dig holes and things like that, tell us what you know about your system. And what we found was there's just a lot of unknowns because, you know, the records are what they are. In a few years, your final distribution system materials, that's when, okay, this is what we found. And so that's, we, we have drafted a proposal to try and start doing some spot checks and things like that to start nailing that down. I've been keeping a list off to the side of everything that we come across, things like the, the shared water services on Water Street. We know are an issue. That's going to be part of that. So I've kind of been jotting things down as, as I've come across them, but really it's going to need to be a comprehensive study.
Yeah, you know, I, I, you know, I think no one likes to see like, you know, Band-Aids on an open wound. But, you know, I think what we do need to do is communicate probably better to the community that, you know, there are potholes, there are problems with the roads, but, you know, some of these Band-Aid fixes would, would be just that. You know, because we, we're going to have to tear, tear the asphalt up to do a lead service line replacement. And if we can get a better handle on like the things Mark mentioned, you know, you know, where, where there's issues with sanitary, where, where there's issue with lead service lines, you know, and, and then the rankings of the roads based on the Pazer. You know, if we can kind of find a way to communicate that better, I think that would at least help the public understand, you know, we're not, we're not just deferring this maintenance because we can. It's because we're trying to be thoughtful about how we do it down the road. So yeah, I think it's actually a huge communications effort as, as much as anything.
Yeah.
And then of course, things like the cost of asphalt as well.
Sure. Right. I will also add that you're, you're probably ahead of the game. It may not seem like it, but it's a, it's a 20-year mandate, basically. They've said, we want you to target 5% of your lead service lines every year for 20 years. So at the end of that 20 years is when Eagle has said, you got to have this all taken care of. And between what we did on North Park Street and what we've just finished doing on Campbell Road, we've, we've gotten rid of a bunch so far. Maybe not, you know, 5%, but you're, you're making progress at least, even with the projects that we are doing.
Madam Mayor, that said, state of Michigan and Scott Dink can talk to, talk to this. We're in queue for unprecedented, unprecedented amount of money to come in for infrastructure projects. And so although it's 20 years, I think we really need to ramp up our engineering efforts to get, get this going sooner rather than later and bring in more resources to study it and understand it better.
Ryan's absolutely right. If, if we can define the problem and have, you know, shovel-ready projects that we can propose when this infrastructure money kicks out, I, I know it's frustrating waiting, but you know, it, it is coming. It has been budgeted. So I think, you know, once again, doing the homework, really understanding our situation and being there because, you know, this could be very competitive. It's going to be very competitive. There's communities that are in a lot worse shape from a social justice standpoint. So there's, it's going to be extremely competitive. So I think the more homework we can do and really have our, our case buttoned together to present when this, when these funds make themselves available would be great.
Yeah. To, to your point, Eagle put out a, a grant, oh, is it two years ago now already? Basically to help communities finish Basically to help communities finish their final DSMIs, and and we applied for it, and we thought we had a decent application, as good as others, at least, because there are a bunch of unknowns in the system and we scored, well, part of it was that the the funding was, you know, they they funded maybe five or 10% of the applications. So the hope is that more of that is going to come, because everybody needs to do this at some point in the near future.
So anticipating that that's coming, it's probably wise to update that.
Yes.
Get it going. All right.
I will also mention, just a teaser for your next workshop, I will be here, kind of stemming from this effort. MDOT has a, they call it Category B, which is basically a program that's focused on your local, local roads, which is everything that isn't eligible for federal funds. So Blue Star Highway is is one of yours, that might be your only road that's eligible for federal money. We, based on driving around and trying to think about what's a good application, we put together an application that's going to have a resolution from you folks. That's due the fifteenth of June, so I'll be at your June eight workshop, and then if everything looks good, you'll you'll act on that at your June thirteen meeting, I believe, is how we've got it scheduled. So we'll get that application in. That's a fifty-fifty grant program for, they kind of focus on preventative maintenance anyway, because that kind of stretches dollars, it it does more with with the same money. So just a teaser, that's that's coming up.
And that's for Blue Star?
No, the, this is on local roads, the ones that we targeted, Lucy Street, Spear Street, Francis Street, Hoffman and Mary, they let, allow you up to five, five streets. So we kind of tried to focus on the downtown, things that benefit the downtown area, things that benefit the schools, those are both things that make for a decent application.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the first work on this. I know it's just the beginning, but it's nice to be proactive.
Got to start somewhere.
Very good, thank you.
Thanks, John.
All right, last up, we had a special event for Memorial Day parade, but we did not receive a special event application, so we have nothing to move on.
That's correct, Madam Mayor, we have no application for this event.
Okay, with that, we'll move to public comments on anything that anybody feels that they'd want to talk about. If you are here and you want to come up and comment on anything, please introduce yourself and limit your comments to three minutes. Anybody online, Jamie?
All right.
With that, we have three pieces of correspondence in your packet. So Board, Commission and Committee reports, I'll start with Ken.
Definitely. Yes, we had a monthly Cal Lake meeting on May sixteenth, short, short meeting. What was shared with us that the annual fire hydrant flushing program was completed, you probably saw a lot of fire hydrants need flushed. And that's, that's about a three or four-day process, if they can work about twelve to sixteen hours a day. But they got it done pretty quick this year. That's the same time that all the fire hydrants are not only flushed, but they're also checked for maintenance and everything. And we have roughly a little over five hundred and sixty fire hydrants that that Cal Lake Services is within our water system, and about twenty-two of them needed some form of repair. So, and they're all documented and and presented to Eagle as part of the flow, hydrant flow testing that has to be done. And the other thing is that I think most of you are aware that we have a wellhead protection program in place through Cal Lake, which is basically more informative for the community. It outlines where the well field, where our wells are and the existing field, water fields that spread out from there. It's it's noted on, you see some signs here and there. We've had to adopt, the committee's adopted ordinance to support the wellhead protection program. And it's an annual program and we're eligible for a grant because we have all these things in force, and we get about, I think, ten thousand dollars if we're else, we, we've applied for that, so.
All right. Just waiting. Waiting, waiting.
Historic district doesn't meet until first weekend June.
Russ?
Yeah, the planning commission meeting on the nineteenth was canceled for lack of agenda items, applications. The Mount Bald Head Work Group, actually, as we're communicating with Ryan, we have, through the work of Chuck Gusterson, have gotten three bids for replacement repair of the fence, so solid bids. We think these are quality vendors, one of them which actually did the fence for the tower. So it's now in Ryan's mailbox and we'll probably be coming to our next meeting with a recommendation on that.
Madam Mayor, if I may. So the fence repairs, that was in the the original scope of work. I think with, as with most service industries, I don't think we were all prepared for where those quotes would come in, especially having to use mules to carry up the fence material to get up there, or helicopter, who knows? So they're all north of ten thousand dollars, which means at this point in time, that's above the the city's threshold for not going out to bid. So the city's going to have to take this over and kind of go through the same, if the the council's so inclined, we'd have to go through the same process that they've gone through, reach out to the same vendors through our purchasing agent, per our policy. Seems very redundant, which it is, but rules, policies are policies. And so that's kind of where it's at. Where it's at. So it is in my, in, it is in my mailbox and it's on my list of to-dos. If council's so inclined, we can reference back to what the spending authority was for the whole project. But again, I think securing that property was always in the scope of work, so.
Thanks, Ryan. Also want to mention, want to thank Lauren because she came to visit with us, Nathan Netering, the project coordinator from the State Historic Preservation Office, did a site visit a week ago Monday, and we're very thankful that he was there. He came up toward the site, asked some questions, we showed him the building, and we are, that project is well on track to be on the agenda in September for approval for National Historic Register, destroyed places, so. And Nathan is the person that's coordinating that application, so we feel pretty good about, hopefully, number six. There's five already in the community, if you didn't know. Did you know? There's the pump house. There's the pump house. There is a bed and breakfast up on Pleasant Street. The pierheads, of all things, the pierheads into the harbor, around the National Historic Register. And number four, I just looked at them today again.
This building?
No, this building is not. All Saints, thank you, All Saints is number four, and I'm forgetting number five. I mentioned the pump house, right?
Yeah. Tridfer?
No, Tridfer is not on there either. So, anyway, the radar station expected to be number six, so should be very proud of that work.
All right.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll wait till council comments.
All right, so let's just start with council comments, then you can go.
Okay, I'll go. I would just like to thank the local scouts, members of the VFW and members of the American Legion, who were out this afternoon, replacing the flags on all the graves of the veteran, of the veterans that lived in Sagetuck and Douglas. You know, you never kind of realize who takes care of all that, you know, those flags are just always there on the graves of the veterans, and it's, it's a lot of volunteers that make that effort, you know, to make sure things are looking really, really nice for for Memorial Day. So a big thank you to all the volunteers.
Other council comments. Real quick, Mayor comments, tomorrow's household hazards, oh, sorry, I missed your.
Oh, thank you, Madam Mayor, a couple of things, yeah, thank you. One is, I do want to acknowledge the fact that the, I I want to thank Chief Janek and the Treasurer for the report that's in the packet regarding the questions that were brought up at the last week's workshop, the Fire District. I thought that was a very reasonable response. Personally have no question, I don't have any additional questions, I look forward to approving the budget here shortly. Speaking of budgets, ours is due as well at the end of June, if I recall correctly. Is there going to be, not having been through the process recently here, is there going to be a workshop or meeting specifically dedicated to workshop discussions and ideas and?
It's usually what happens.
When is that, what, can can I get a, when we expect that to happen, is that a special meeting, is it within a workshop? How's that going to work?
Typically, well, last year, so only a year and a half.
I'm just asking because I've not been through it, so.
Who are you?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yeah, so typically, Peter is so efficient that we can handle it during a workshop, through a normal course of business, doesn't require a special dedicated workshop. Of course, Madam Mayor, if I could turn to Mark, the, who has a lot of experience with the budget process, I mean, does that seem accurate?
Other than having a public hearing.
Yeah, sure.
About the budget and the village and all that stuff.
And and we incorporate that as part of the the normal workshop council meeting process. Given that we have so many meetings, we can just work it in there.
Okay, great. Last thing is, I did get a report from a citizen who sent me pictures of some safety issues at Oval Beach and Sagetuck Dunes Harbor area. Apparently, there's some posts and barbed wire that had been out, left behind by whatever, and should be probably removed at some point, as well as brought up some issues regarding some safety, some stakes that are sticking up out of the ground at Oval Beach that apparently could be of danger.
On the dune, probably.
Yeah, it's, it's probably just old, 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 old stuff, but it's on city property.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So, Madam Mayor, please, if I may, please do forward those, those requests to us anytime and or have the resident reach out to us. I know it's Scott Herbert has been dealing with this issue historically.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, we have a pretty good response.
Thank you.
Other council comments. Okay, so Mayor comments, tomorrow's Household Hazers Waste Day, at last count, I had two hundred and thirty-two people signed up for two hundred and eighty-eight spaces, and people have been signing up furiously suddenly at the last minute. We had a good volunteer meeting today doing a run-through, so everybody's good to go. So if you're not signed up, but you're out and about and want to stop by and say hi, we're there from three o'clock to seven. ERG, Environmental Services, will be there at one to start setting up, and we'll probably start taking cars through as soon as they're ready to go. So each municipality has agreed to spend up to five thousand dollars, and that is added to what the Rotary Club, the ten thousand dollar Rotary Club has already given, so we feel really comfortable where we're at. So it's looking to be a great day, weather's going to be good. Regarding the Fire Department budget, I submitted ten questions to the manager today that I have specific to the budget that I want answers to. And if anybody else has questions specific to the budget, the Fire Department budget, they should send it to the manager as well, as I see the manager and the fire chief on equal footing and able to have that discussion. All right, all right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So.
All right. Motion by Truster and a second by Becken. And clerk, please call the roll. Is it? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
All right, anybody opposed? All right, very good, there you go.